Order.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meetings, that we can go through the business of this town and represent people well. We thank you for the fall weather that's come upon us, the change in the seasons we get to experience each year. We just pray that you watch over everybody as we continue through this time of pandemic, that that can get done with and we can move on to something a little more normal. Your name we pray, amen.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from August 17th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There has been motion is, and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions?
Move to approve the agenda.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Jared, this is Nancy, Jerry's not here tonight.
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, so we're now at the engineer's report, if you'd like to.
All right, I'll take it, you should have a copy of the report, it tends to be monthly, uh, week. Generally, our report is continuing to look, you know, about the same. The closed out project with Mayo, as far as construction goes, on the 2019 Street project. We have the assessments, public hearing, uh, coming up. It's not scheduled yet, but the, uh, committee has to do their thing, hold the public hearing, the council has to approve the final assessment with, all due to the county by November. So, again, just be aware of that, watch for that, paper newspaper, uh, should be coming out soon. The, um, next thing I have on my list is, uh, probably not Monty jumping here too, but doing what I've got forward to the corrective paving work out by the expedition of State's area. We tabled this at the last, um, council meeting, the city has a quote to do the work. Williams Building Company is working with that or another contractor, I guess, trying to get the same work done. And, uh, I guess like we've been kind of sitting here saying, we, you know, we want the contractor to do it, pay for it, but, you know, if they won't, then we might as well take the steps ourselves. So, if you want, he's heard something from that developer.
No, I have not, the last, I talked to them was last Tuesday. They had contacted Bechtold again to get a detailed estimate to do just the minimum raising and lowering, or lowering the manhole and then doing a lift just to get everything in a, in a condition so that we could remove snow and everything this winter and then address it more completely once they've resolved their issue. But as of yet, they have not gotten anything definite back. Darryl did acknowledge that, yeah, this is gonna have to be sooner than later because we're running out of time here. So, I would hope we'll have something before the next meeting or we'll have to, like you said, take action.
Yeah, all right, we're, we're talking about 20 grand here probably of cost if we, we're gonna do it as a city. Yeah, I'll just add, I'll fill my list for two weeks, so we'll talk about that. Next thing I have is on the, um, water service lowering. So, um, recall, three weeks ago, we talked about this. We got two quotes, two, um, not lower, excuse me, insulating. There were six water service lines that are, are susceptible to freezing. We solicited quotes, we got two quotes back, we even have one contractor, uh, wants to do the work, but then withdrew his quote, they can do the work next year. Not cheap, you know, it's in that 50,000 for just doing the work minus patching, and then that 70,000 bucks to do the work with patching. So, some of the discussion we had three weeks ago was, we, we were waiting to hear if a third contractor was gonna bid on it. There's, there's a third contractor that would do the work next year, but not this year. So, if we, we want the work done this year, we're limited to that dollar amount. And the second thing we talked about was, um, deciding who was gonna pay for it. If those homeowners were gonna be on the hook, or a portion or all of that cost. So, we tabled that decision until this meeting, uh, see if you have that money and are willing to do it or, you know, just to bring it up again.
Hey Jared, this is Jason. If that contractor that would be interested to do it next year, did he or they hint any about price at all or not really?
Yeah, we got a really good price from them. You know, it wasn't an apples to apples bid, but, uh, yeah. So, really what happened was they submitted a bid and then a day later said, oops, we screwed this up and they withdrew it, so we can't get the work done this year. So, but they did say they'd be willing to do it next year. So, it's, it's about 20 grand for them to dig up and, um, insulate those water service lines. So, it's a savings, pretty good savings compared to what, uh, the other two guys were, were gonna do. I would say what we probably have to do is, is, I'd have to get some correspondence from them saying, yes, we're going to honor our number for next year, we'll do it. It's all discussion with them right now, but it, they've indicated they, they wanna do it, but next year.
And if we're looking at that much savings, you know, if you can get it in writing, next year would probably, yeah, would still work, but.
Cause we don't pay $20,000 for the excess of, for the extra water usage, do we?
No.
Over the course of the winter?
And you said that wasn't apple to apple or not quote?
It didn't, it, he didn't include the paving.
Okay.
Still gotta figure out the paving.
Okay.
If you, if we're, if you're waiting on me to get confirmation on it, I would say let's just table it again. But just know that the work is not gonna get done this fall. We're, we're still just gonna have to donate water to those people.
What are everyone's wishes?
I, I think for $20,000 difference, we, we go ahead and we pay the water bill and just apologize to the citizens that we have one more season to go through this and then go after it in the spring or summer where it ever is, if they'd be able to go after it. And I know we tabled it last, last time to discuss, maybe today, as to who would be financially responsible for it. And I think there was maybe some differences in opinions. I know that we have been paying for excess water use, which to me is an indicator that as a city, we've taken responsibility for those freeze-up conditions on behalf of those citizens. So, it would be my feeling that we go after this, we do the best we can on price. We have to figure out where we can slip that into our budget.
Jared, do you think you can get them to hold that bid?
I will call, I'll call them tomorrow and I'll email Monty whatever I find out.
Okay. And, uh, I, I would agree, waiting, I would wait till the next meeting to make any decision at all.
We could do that.
So that Jerry's gonna be here for that also. To see if we can get that bid in writing. And then we can discuss or plan on how it's gonna be paid for. Depending on how much we're looking at. Cause right now, we're estimating how much it's gonna be, basically. It could be a large difference.
I think I'm clear on the next steps. I, 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 we'll, we'll all do some work and we'll talk in, in two weeks. Just know we'll, 99% chance we're not getting it done this year.
Yes. Yep.
Great. Well, sweat. Next thing I have on my list then is, uh, just water storage tank. I don't know if I told you this two weeks ago, but they, the archaeologist didn't find anything up there, so that's all good. As far as working with wetlands, there's, there's a small wetland north of the tank. We can minimize that in, uh, temporary disruptions or temporary impacts, so we'll just work through that. Uh, I told Monty I would try and get him a, a, a map for today's meeting. Didn't get that done, didn't get that out. Generally, what we're looking at is, oh, all those turbines were, um, were fine. The site was good, we need a quarter acre. That, that's not so, so big a deal, I mean, describing a quarter acre there is just simple. It's more so the, the route, you know, there's, there's three potential routes to get up there. And I, I think I just need to get the map done and, you know, if we're gonna cross this guy's land or this guy's land or this guy's land, we, we could follow the section line or we could just extend those, um, those trails off of some of those streets that are up there. Would all work, but if we, we're gonna go, you know, through those other people's lands and, and, or simply to track that way, we just have to describe the reason for that stuff too. And it ain't gonna be a big deal, we can, we can always default, default in section line. So, that's not a problem. Anyways, I, I, just one, the only update here is just that we, we should work to acquire the land easements, get that done, environmental part, we done pretty quick here. Any questions for me?
I don't think at this time, no.
Okay. Sorry to get that few today, Monty. Once we have the, you know, the, the route and the landowner is saying, yep, we like this route, they'll describe it, we'll email the property description to you and Pat. You guys can do the acquisition stuff and, uh, be done with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, then, really, the next thing I have on my list is, um, not much going on other than, um, cities and counties got notified of another funding source opportunity that's out there. Um, page number two of your, um, engineer's, uh, report. Kind of overlaps a little bit with what we were talking about a few months ago. So, throughout the year, we get different notifications and deadlines for funding. You'll, you'll probably see there's, there's two FEMA programs that have applications to do with end year. One is the, um, FMA, flood emergency, so it's a flood mitigation assistance program. And the other one, um, it's called the P, you know, pre-disaster mitigation program. Uh, it's called BRIC now, but I'm, I'm working under the PDM, um, program. Anyway, um, there's, 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 there's multiple programs all the time. And the, kind of the thing that came to mind here was, um, your flood plain on the, on the south side of town. The, uh, flood study can get funded through the Water Commission or it could get funded through FEMA. Monty asked a good question, will, can we use this program and just cover more? Yes, it's a higher grants, but there's probably more work because we have to do a, that's a cost analysis. I don't wanna get into too many of the details, but, um, we've been kind of looking at this flood plain on the south side of town and know there's some work to do, to do a study. But it's, you know, it's not cheap, it's probably, you know, 50 grand to do a, a study down there. What a study will do is it, it'll identify a, a project, you know, it'll identify a cost and it'll identify the benefit. Landowners that are affected, the properties, that, play with the cost is gonna be and then use that to justify if you wanna do it or not. That's the, that's the nuts and bolts of a study. Well, we have cost share in place if we wanna do it. I probably wouldn't go after this stuff. It's a little bit more of cost share, but it's pretty involved to, to get it. So, it might end up costing more in the long run. All in all, the city is interested in, in doing that study. I think we're sitting fine. We, we kind of know there'd be a local share of, you know, maybe 15 to 20,000 bucks for, in the state would cover it. If you think knocking a couple thousand bucks off of that will, um, make you wanna do that, then we'll go after this. But if that couple thousand bucks in cost share isn't significant and, you know, isn't gonna put you to the point where you're like, oh, yeah, we, we wanna do this now. So, I, I just put these, these funding options on these agendas every time they come up so we can talk through them, if the city wants to apply for something or not. If we do a study and, you know, there's a viable project and the city wants to pursue it, this is where we will go to get construction dollars for it. But I, I would say, but at this point, I probably, probably wouldn't go after this for a study phase. This is my opinion only. Any discussion?
Jared, uh, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, uh, you know, I guess, like, wasn't this already done, I guess, before? In the study, I mean, I mean, I guess. I thought that we had this done back in like 2012 or, or 20, 20, I guess, like 13 or something like that.
When I reviewed all that correspondence, what I saw, that Alte was proposing that he guys do this stuff and that he didn't actually do the study.
Okay. All right.
We kind of, we just kind of picked up, I think, if I'm wrong, tell me, but we just kind of picked it up and it kept you on the, the funding list here and. Part of the discussion was just that, you know, geez, if we're gonna spend a million dollars and it only benefits, you know, five or 10 properties, is it gonna be worth it? Well, we don't know that until we, you know, get through a study.
Okay.
Anyway, I think this is, this is a good program. If, if, if there's anything else that comes to mind, like, for example, we'd use this to relocate wells or lift stations out of a flood plain. Use something like that, well, then, then it's like, you know, it's a good program. Or replace a, you know, water intake structure because if it, uh, fails, the city's not gonna have water. That, that's the type of program this is, it's pre-disaster mitigation, to try and prevent the disaster. Applications are due at the end of the year. I'll leave this on my agenda for next two weeks.
Okay.
If, if you think of something that might fit this, run it by me and we'll, we'll talk about it, see if the city wants to go after it or not.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's the end of my report, but I'm just gonna come online for 20 minutes or so here in case someone has something.
Okay. And we're gonna move on to the annexation plat review.
Mr. Link completed the six annexation plats for those areas that were discussed over the different timeframes. Basically, just need your approval if we wanna proceed forward with them to do the notices to all the property owners, do the publication. This is the small flat by Stephens, that Steffen property in West Hazen. This is taking forever. This would be the Gowan property north of Highway 200 and east of Antelope Drive. The next one would be the property, property currently owned by Mr. Gowan north of Highway 200 and west of Antelope Drive, up to the old county road easement. This would be the Antelope Ox Bowl, now, the majority is now owned by Mr. Meisner, north of the creek. But we would include those properties on the south side of the creek that have already been purchased by the adjacent lot owners as part of their property. So, we would be notifying all of them.
How many property owners are over there, Monty?
Uh, there are three other ones for sure. We're not positive, I, we have to do a little more research on this as to if this parcel is actually bought by that property owner or not. And we have the property east, on the east end of 7th Street, north of the hospital, going to the corridor line. So, that would include four property owners for sure. There is a question because one of the descriptions doesn't actually, one description goes to the right of way, one goes to the center line of the road, so there might be 33 feet still owned by somebody who thinks they sold it. Sold. And, and then last one should be where our lift station number one is located. The city already owns the property, it's just not part of the city limits.
And so tonight, we just need a motion?
Motion to accept these plats and we'll move forward with the annexation process and give the property owners the opportunity to protest out if they wish.
Okay.
What is the process or do you send letters to the property owners? Do you just publish in a paper? No, we'll provide actual letter notice to the property owners, plus it still has to be published. Yep. And then we set up a meeting for public opinion or whatever? They'll have a certain timeframe in order to object to the annexation. I can't remember if it's 30 days from publication or 15 from publication, I'll have to look at that. Is the intent to do the individual? Individual. Yeah, that was my understanding, the intent was to do them individually. With, with the exception of that last one, or the second to the last one that goes to the, the line there that has four different property owners, that would be that whole grouping. Well, yeah, it'd be similar to the Ox Bowl one, it'd be all of those property owners. So, if, is the way it works bad, if any of those opt out, then the whole thing is?
No, it takes a percentage of the land.
Over 50% is land ownership, yeah. Gotcha. So, if you have the bigger parcel and you opt out. Everybody's out, yeah.
So, I know the way that we've been doing the, I guess, the, you know, the streets, projects, projects in Vegas, the special and stuff. And in the past, it was just a area of town and now lately was all or none.
For a special assessment district, yeah, yeah, it's a totally different, yeah.
It's kind of the same.
Annexation, right. Because that's supposed to be tied to the benefit to property, whereas this is.
Yeah, it's similar, it's 50% to protest out, yeah, very similar.
So, what are the wishes of the board? Motion approved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Hat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried.
And then I'll, attorney Donovan to dot all the i's and cross the t's.
Okay. Next on the agenda is local permits. We have three of them. We can do them each individually or, or all together. We have area dollars for scholars. Should they haven't decided what they're doing yet or?
It's all for their scholarships, so they'll be doing raffles.
Okay.
You know, 50/50?
Yeah, yeah. Now, this one is the fire department, but, uh, hazen area dollars for scholars and there's all kinds of different, the raffles and different names throughout the year.
That's why they didn't have a list of.
Okay, and the school does the same for the games?
For their, for their needs.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept all three permits.
Second.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Can we do a roll, do we have to do a roll call or, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have a moving and building permit for Rotts.
They had gone back and forth, they had presented this quite some time ago that they'd like to move a pre-constructed shed and their current shed is a 10 by 13. The shed they're looking at is a 10 by 16, so it's, and it will be placed in the same proximity to their fence as the old shed, it will go farther into their property line. This is the idea, the concept of it as far as colors and everything. And this is the one that it will be replacing. And it requires a $200 moving permit since it is pre-constructed. And that's the reason we're discussing it this evening? That's the reason, yeah. You, you approve permits to move structures in. Correct, no variance necessary. No variance required, no. Okay, make a motion to accept the moving and the building permit for Rotts.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion?
Monty, is the color gonna be the same color as their house or is it gonna be that reddish color?
It'll, it'll, the way it sounded, it would probably be that reddish color.
Which they could probably paint it too if it's wood.
Yeah, it is a wood structure with a steel roof.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. We're gonna move on to reports. Water sewer?
Have nothing at this time.
Streets and cemetery?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Finance, busing, library?
The library, there was a group of, group of, I guess, volunteers that, that, I guess, cleaned up alone. Cleaned up around, yeah, I guess, in front of, I guess, in front of, I guess, a library there. Wrote some weeds and stuff and it looks really good now, that's what I, some items yet to do yet, but I think that group is also gonna plan out what to do in that area next spring or two.
Sounds good, it looks nice.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah, it does. And then, I guess, last week, Wednesday, we, we had, uh, had, I guess, a busing board. Talked about the grants that are gonna be, they're gonna be upcoming here on the agenda. Also talked about, uh, about, I guess, purchasing a new van and maybe, maybe there's a bus as well. About, I guess, purchasing a new van and maybe even maybe there's a bus as well. Sounds good. Sounds like, I guess, with the grant money, a lot of it would probably be paid for a bowl.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I have nothing with the police player. HCD?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Um, we're going to move on to old business, which is the twenty twenty-one transient grants. Transit grants. Not transient.
Uh, these are the ones that Casey referred to from our meeting. As I said in the notes, for the fifty-three eleven, which is the operating and administrative grant, we were awarded a hundred and ninety-one thousand in federal funding. The way it stands right now with the COVID stuff, they're actually funding at a hundred percent. So it's not a fifty fifty at this point. It may change back to a fifty fifty depending on how this health stuff goes. Uh, then we were also approved for our fifty-three thirty-nine grant for forty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new van. We can buy that under the state contract. We would we would still be responsible, that's an eighty twenty, so we would pay eight thousand dollars for that new van. Then state aid, we were awarded just so just under thirty thousand, twenty-nine thousand some dollars. Uh, the state aid is basically formula from the funding that the state gets through the legislature. Then they pay up. We can use that as part of our match for our other grants. And now since, you know, the fifty-three eleven is basically a hundred percent, that would give us some of our match money even for our man, so. So they're all pretty decent. And we were notified that there is additional funding under the CARES Act COVID stuff for vehicles. So that's why we're going to look into another bus. One of ours is nearly at the end of useful life according to state standards. It's a great bus, it's the only one we haven't worked on this year, so.
How many miles have you got on it?
Yeah, it's fifty-eight thousand.
I assume there's nothing, there's some things that aren't to current code?
No, it's it's still within code, it's just the end of useful life. They set it up for cutaway buses, the useful life is seven years or so many miles. And it's at the seven years. So basically, we'll get the title to that at the end of this, at the end of this year. It'll be ours to do whatever we want. And at this point, we'd kind of like to keep it, like I say, it's the only one that Dave hasn't worked on this year, so. Yeah.
So the action tonight is just approval to accept.
Approval for, yeah, yeah, approval for Jerry and I to sign these.
Was that a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Are there limitations as to what the the first one, that was pretty sizable, what that can be spent on? You said you called it administrative, so.
Operating and administrative.
That covers our operating expenses.
Fuel, repairs.
Sure.
Supplies, office supplies, yeah.
And this is for what duration of time?
Theirs runs from July first to next, June thirty.
Okay.
Their fiscal year is July to June, ours is January to.
And and money is dispersed to us as we spend it or does it, okay, but does it just come into our account and?
We do a quarterly request for reimbursement.
Very good.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. We're on to the city fee discussion.
Just sent it out, as we were doing the budget, we had talked about the different fees and that we're currently charging and some ideas. Jerry did get a list back to me for your review. Just wondering if anybody else wants to make some recommendations or or not. Some of these need to be changed by resolution, so depending on how we proceed, if we want to start them by January one, we'll have to amend some resolutions and do the two readings and have them adopted. So I guess at this point, if you have any recommendations, just shoot them to me, we'll compile them and discuss it in the future and amend resolutions as you see fit.
Can you point out to us which ones are that constitute a a change to a policy or something versus just saying, yeah?
Basically, anything that's covered under resolution are water, sewer, garbage fees are all governed by resolution, permits are governed by resolution. Liquor, I want to say the liquor or just by motion. I can I can put that together, yeah. I can put that together and let you know, like dumpster rental, all of those. Street light, I believe, is set by resolution.
Because if there's some that are just quick and quick and dirty and we could lump those together or whatever and mutually agree to those, just rock and roll. And then the other ones we we can do due diligence on.
Yeah, it'll be the majority of them, they're actually set by resolution.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
So I got a question about the streetlight fees, I mean, that'll be on the, I guess, like monthly bill, right?
Correct.
And and how how does that work, you know, is that is that if you have it on your property?
No.
So I've got one that on on my street?
Basically, every residential customer pays the residential street light fee, every commercial customer pays.
Across the board, it's spread out, okay.
You know, on the, I guess, like, street light fee, it's kind of a big jump there.
Yeah.
But I know that that doesn't pay for all the lighting fees just on that fee, right?
No, no, it's still some general, regular general fund dollars that are used to pay electric bills, you know?
And then on the new LED lights, that's supposed to be like the savings over two.
Yes. There is some, it's. Yeah, what you save on the electricity, they actually made up a little bit on the actual pole rental.
Yeah.
Because we paid for each pole too, so. We've seen a little bit of savings, but it's it's not a large amount. And and it, I mean, if there's some that we think are fine where they're at, I have no problem, we just leave them where they're at.
And you'll just have that on the agenda for next meeting again and everyone can look at it?
If anybody wants to give me some numbers, I'll doctor this up to show which ones are by resolution and which ones are by motion.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay, that's not a problem.
And the sheet you're looking at now is just Jerry's recommendations?
This is just Jerry's recommendations, yeah. Here was some of the comparison, just a few of them. And then these are our building fees. So, yeah, I'll doctor that up and we'll go from there.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. Any other discussion on the fees? Okay. If there's no new business, we're going to go to approval of the bills. Everyone should have those.
Monty, you can overcharge the bills. Do yours first, please.
No, every, uh, Senate does the actual federal excise tax after, at the end of the month, so.
Move to approving bills.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried.
Just quick before we go, uh, I could have brought it up during Jerry's report time. Black Mountain software, all of our software, utility billing, payroll, all of the accounting software. When all of this COVID stuff started, they offered the cloud free of charge. So everybody, they were working from home or wherever, they would have access to it from their homes. They are anticipating starting to charge now October one. Uh, the annual fee for the cloud software is one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars a year. So they were kind of wondering where we were at with it. It's it's excellent, we don't have to worry about updates, they back it up every night. It's it's really kind of nice having the cloud. The only issue has been the three or four times the internet has dropped and you lose it. An hour later, you just have to go back in. So just to bring that to your attention. And then with the payroll deferral stuff, visited with a bunch of the employees, they would prefer to keep just withholding and sending it in the Medicare, Social Security, the way it is now, rather than deferring it and paying, starting to pay it back in January. That was part of the presidential executive order that you could defer those, employees could defer those.
Yeah.
We really haven't been affected so much by it, everybody's still getting the.
It means they'd still be on the hook for the whole amount. It was just delaying when they would have to start paying.
Yeah.
And wouldn't it be due by April?
Yeah, from January to April, it would have to be paid back.
Right.
Like, clearly, if the employees are seeing there's no real value to them.
The only the only value, my understanding, the only value would be if somebody gets elected and pushes through a bill that says that forgive them.
Oh, yeah.
Trump said that if you get sent, it's over. That'd be good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's approved by Congress. So just to let you know that we're going to just keep doing business as usual as far as our payroll.
Okay.
Do you, are you asking for any direction on that software?
I guess if you guys. One thousand nine hundred and ten dollars a year. And they will prorate, because they run it January to January to December, they'll prorate.
So if we didn't do that, then all of that software would reside someplace here.
And it goes back onto our machines.
And somebody has to become the the IT expert and do backups and all that kind of stuff. By being on the cloud, that provides you access, web access from.
Anyway.
You could do it from your house and stuff like that?
Yeah, you just have to have your IP approved. Just.
Yeah. Are we are we putting our GIS stuff on there as well?
No.
No, okay.
Right now, that our G, most of our GIS is actually residing on our engineering server right now.
Got it.
We just have access through the web.
So that's that's a that's a virtual access as well.
Yeah.
So I had written a hundred and sixty bucks.
A month.
A month. I don't know, I think it's worth it to me, yeah, I could still, I think, if you divide it up, one month.
Well, you know, the reality is to to hollow software on site here as well, you have a, I'm assuming, a designated server?
Actually, no.
No?
They're residing on PCs, just shared PCs.
Okay. Which you have to update that.
Yeah. So now we're kind of the kind of the Black Mountain or whatever, that's kind of the the trip server, if you will.
Well, I I think everybody's pretty much going to web-based, cloud-based programming and stuff anymore. It offers up some additional reliability with regard to backups and everything like that. You can say you're going to do internal backups, but somebody goes on vacation and then all of a sudden you're a week behind on that or two weeks behind on that and something crashes and then you're, I got some issues, yeah. I I think it's a good investment.
I'll make that motion to proceed forward with the Black Mountain for nineteen, other than change here.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, if not, roll call.
Hat.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Any other new business? I mean. If not, meeting is adjourned.